I now call the Ripon City Council meeting for Tuesday, January fourteenth to session. Would the city attorney like to report out from our closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
The public, this council did meet in closed session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss the three items listed on the agenda as one, two, and three: real property negotiations, labor negotiations, and conference legal counsel regarding pending or threatened litigation. In all three matters, staff was given direction, but no further reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Now let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in the invocation. Vice Mayor DeGraff, would you like to lead us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bow together. Almighty triune God, we bow before you at the beginning of this meeting because you are our Creator. You created all things. You are holy, you are good, all that is right and good. All the wonderful gifts we enjoy flow from you. You are the one who raises up leaders. All true wisdom flows from you. And so we come and we ask you for wisdom, for good decisions, that healthy society may be maintained and advanced. So bless this meeting, grant that wisdom that is needed. We pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Lisa, roll call please.
House Member Leo Zuber.
President.
Ms. Susha.
President.
Mayor Newker.
Here.
Vice Mayor Daniel DeGraff.
Here.
Mayor Dave Parks.
Here.
We will now move on to the public discussion. This time is provided for the public to address any item that is not on the agenda. Please step up to the podium and state your name and address.
My name is Brianna Gonzalez. My address is 581 John Camps Way. I am a district representative and grants manager for Congressman Josh Harder. I wanted to come here and give you guys a little bit of information about what we can offer in our office. So my role especially is the grants manager. So anytime you guys are looking for any grants or any funding, please come to me and we would always write a letter of support on your behalf and help in any way that we can to get those funds here to you. We also have a very robust casework program. So if anyone in the public ever has issues with any federal agencies, whether that be the VA, Social Security, IRS, et cetera, please come to our office and we can help you and we'll do what we can to help. I have some flyers here. Is there someone? Great. Hey, good to see you. So those are papers on our federal resource program, our grant program, and also our casework program. I'm sorry, I have more papers. I also wanted to provide you our annual report for 2019, and the public can access this on harder.house.gov. Just really quickly, it's a nice little packet, but I'll just go over the first page. Just to let you guys know, we passed eight bills and amendments through the House of Reps. We have held eighteen public towns halls across the valley for more than seventeen hundred attendees. We worked across the aisles to support three hundred and twelve bipartisan bills, the most of any member of Congress, just FYI. So we are extremely bipartisan. We also returned over five hundred thousand dollars to Central Valley's families owed payment by the VA, IRS, Medicare, and other federal agencies. That's through our casework management, our casework program. And we also brought more than twenty million dollars in grant funding, and that was through the grants program. So if you have any questions, I will be sitting over there. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Dwayne Murray, 1156 Robert. The reason I've stopped in this evening to speak with you all is back on the sidewalk vendor program. After reviewing your new ordinances and all, I would like to point out to you, and we've had some discussions with people, but get it open to the whole council. The state law that was recently passed that went into effect states that cities may adopt their own ordinances so long as they live within the spirit of that law and don't violate any of the regulations in that law. Off the top, reading it, you've put restrictions in there about hours of operation, no holiday work, no after-hours. That's in direct contradiction to the state law that says you may not put restrictions on hours of operation that conflict or do not match what you put brick-and-mortar stores under. Another one is you cannot limit the number of sidewalk vendors in your city, yet you've put a regulation in that says sidewalk vendors must be so far apart. You've stipulated a distance, which is a de facto way to limit how many vendors you have in your city. There's other regulations in there that don't match. The other problem is you pass this ordinance basically in the dark unless somebody stays on top of your meeting only and not every city in the county where vendors might be working. You passed it, you said it would go into effect in thirty days. Everybody that's in planning, most of the police officers, they know us, they know our business. We've been operating in Ripon for four months. Yet, the day before, or the day, basically the day before it goes into effect, we get our notice, we're handed the regulations and told, well, you don't comply. Went ahead, had plans, went ahead, and we set up the next day. One of the employees of the city shows up with a pre-typed-out administrative fine, and we get hit with a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine and told we have to pay two-hundred-and-sixty-four extra dollars to apply for a new sidewalk vendor permit that's non-refundable, that by the way, we won't qualify for. I don't know anybody running a hot dog cart business, out of all the hot dog carts that we researched, that can fit in a three-by-three-by-three space and have no heat source to cook the hot dogs. We were told directly, cook them at home, wrap them in foil, and then bring them out to sell them. Any of you studs that play football want to eat cold hot dogs been wrapped in foil for four or five hours? And those are football players. They'll eat anything. So I would ask you all to look at your ordinance and don't have it written to make sure nobody can qualify to be a vendor in this town. You're not open to business and you weren't fair. Now, on another note, that traffic signal at West Ripon Road, Main Street in Jacktown, I don't know why, but at five o'clock on Friday nights, no more than four cars can get through that light coming into town, ever. And there's always a peace officer parked there to give out tickets if somebody tries to push it and be the fifth car. So somebody's aware of that light. Let's fix that too, instead of trying to speed trap people. Thank you.
My name's Jeff Sanford. I'm part-owner of Camino Dogs, and like he said, we've been doing business in the city for numerous months. Everything that was cited to me was under safety and health concerns, yet the whole time we've been out there, we've had not one issue with safety and health concerns. The majority of my customers were not the kids from high school. They passed me by just to go to Pizza Plus, because that's what they always do. The majority of my customers were people like you and me, adults. I had elderly people stop, I had handicap people stop. If nobody in this town wanted this type of business in this town, they wouldn't have stopped and bought anything from me, and I would have left. Like he said, I was given the paperwork twenty-four, less than twenty-four hours before the new ordinance became into effect. I've been told by people in this city, we don't want you here. Who doesn't want me here? You, sitting up here, or these people sitting out here? Seems to me like you all made up the decision what we're going to have and what we're not going to have in Ripon. I get the part of not wanting a hundred taco trucks in your town, I get that. But guarantee, because one hot dog guy sets up a town, you're not going to have the streets lined with street vendors. But yet, you took it upon yourself to do what you did, and I took the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine just so I could go before a judge. But you know what? I can't take this before a judge. It's an administrative fine. Just pay it and go on about your business. And like he stated, for another sidewalk vending permit was another two-hundred, not sixty-four dollars, was another two-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars, which was non-refundable. So why would I pursue that? I'll take the two-hundred-and-fifty, which has already been paid, and I think should be returned to me. I had a business license to do business in this town until December thirty-first. This happened on December sixteenth. When code enforcement showed up, I can show you right here, my name and address was printed on it. It was pre-planned. I ask that you guys go back and look at this again. That's all I have to say. Because if I have to, I will pursue it to the state level, if that's what it takes. Thank you.
Seeing none, we will close the public discussion section of the city council meeting. We will move on to the approval of the amendments.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We will now move on to the approval of the agenda.
This is where we pull stuff, right?
Yep.
I have three items on the consent calendar that I'd like to pull for discussion. One point two C, one point two H, and one point four, what did I say? F? Yeah, F.
One point two.
One point four. One point two C, one point two H, and one point four F.
Anybody else?
I have four items, but I got my answers.
You do? Alright, you're good. Okay.
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Approval of the consent calendar.
So move.
Man.
I'm gonna log. Alright. Councilman Zuber?
One point two C, this is the Granicus Management Bill. This is, is this an annual cost?
It is.
Do we pay that every year for all this?
It is.
Yeah, okay. I just didn't remember seeing it before. And one point two H, where are we on getting WELL-12 back online? Seems like we've been paying bills to these people for quite a while.
Yeah, so just, that'd be me, Mr. Councilman Zuber. In December, Don Pedro Pump installed the pump and motor, and Wood Rogers has a couple of additional transducers to install, and that'll be taking place this month, and the pump and motor will be up and running this month. So we'll start our testing process beginning at by the end of this month.
Okay. Thank you. And the la, one point four, oops, I gotta find my notes. One point four F, this has to do with the electrical for the license plate readers. It seems to me we've had items on here for a while about dealing with Caltrans, about getting these things installed. How much longer? Because I think it's been a year since we decided we were going to do it.
Yeah, it's been a long process. These will be the first license plate readers in Caltrans District Ten, so we've kind of gone through some different iterations with Caltrans. But we're expecting by May to have these cameras installed and operating.
And how many of them are there?
There'll be four. Be four of them.
All the rest of them are installed?
Yes.
Okay.
Am I right, Dan? All the other cameras have been installed and operating? They're within the city of Ripon right of way. Those are all operating and being used right now.
Okay. Alright. Thank you. With that, I'll move to approve the three items.
Second.
And with that, the consent calendar is done. We'll now move on to proclamations. It's the reason everybody's here.
You gonna read every one of them in the middle?
You know what? I'm gonna pronounce everybody's.
No, you need to read the whole proclamation.
He can't read.
Here you guys go.
I just want to state for the record, this has to be very ironic, as an RC crap, so handing out this. So, for those of you that don't know, the Ripon football team was state champs in December, correct? Yes, yes, not too long ago. So, whereas the hard work, dedication, sportsmanship, talent, and exceptional team chemistry of the 2019 Ripon High School football team has enabled these students to earn a state championship title, and whereas winning the 2019 California CIF State Division Four Double-A title was brought, has brought honor to Ripon, to Ripon High School and the city of Ripon to the local state national level. Whereas head coach Chris Musman and the entire coaching staff, team members, parents, faculty, and student body at Ripon High School were integral in guiding the team to victory through their unwavering support. Now therefore, I, Jacob Parks, Mayor of the city of Ripon, do hereby recognize and heartily congratulate Ripon High School and the 2019 state championship football team on their outstanding accomplishment. Therefore be it resolved that the Ripon City, that the city council of the city of Ripon, speaking on behalf of all the people, publicly congratulate the Ripon High School football team on becoming CIF state champs for Double-A. So, you guys want to go ahead and come up? You guys can debate about anything. Jake, just one last?
Tell the audience where you want them to get them. Tell them that they're getting them.
So each and every single one of the team members will get a proclamation from the city.
And the coaches, too.
And the coaches, everyone.
Congratulations.
I think we're going to be one picture, so.
Right in the middle, Jake.
Yeah, right, I know, right in the middle.
They make you look small, Jake.
Yeah, I know. This is like, few times that I'm actually like, not the tall.
And old, too.
Yeah. Don't even rub it in, Mike. Yeah, so go ahead and get in as close as you guys can.
The fact that the beard is gray makes it bad, but the fact that they can't even grow a beard yet.
Two rows? Okay, so here, just go ahead and.
Jake, get in front, you're the shortest.
Just, where's Michael Marchand? That's my question. You guys should have made Michael come in. Oh, that's not acceptable.
So I had a friend of mine on the back of my leather jacket, he was an artist, so he drew a picture, it was like custom made.
Awesome, thank you. You guys heard very much.
Football back there. Adjusted the number on it, it was just like kind of a generic number on the jersey. And I've seen other people over the years that got my image on it. It's like, that is me on your jacket, and you didn't even know it. So I guess, custom brown artwork.
Yeah, the great comment was unnecessary. It's very self-evident.
It's gonna get worse. You guys are gonna grow beards.
Yeah, that one hit home, yeah.
I saw. Glad you could hear it.
Yeah.
She's gonna have Josh Harder.
Oh, yeah.
What?
Damn, that's alright. Alright, moving on, we are going to the second reading and adoption. Who would like to take this one?
I will, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
So this is the ordinance that was introduced at the last city council meeting regarding the changes to the Water System Services section of the Ripon Municipal Code. Some of these changes are in regards to the newly-signed Senate Bill 998, and then there were also a couple of policy changes which we discussed last meeting. So the action, the recommended action would be to waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
Make a motion, we waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance.
Moving on, discussion items. Three A, the One Voice Trip.
Mr. Mayor, it's that time in the year when SJ-COG requests local jurisdictions to submit projects for the upcoming One Voice Trip. This year's trip is May tenth through the fourteenth, and like the last couple of years, the city staff is recommending that we submit two projects. Our regional transportation project is, would be the Ripon Multi-Modal Station. This would be located near downtown Ripon with the advantages of providing economic, our downtown economic vitality, regional ACE service, and air quality improvements. We have received a three-point-nine-million-dollar grant, FTA grant, to put towards that project, so that would actually help us leverage that project with other grant opportunities. And these are the type of projects that have seemed to have been doing fairly well through the One Voice Trip. The other project is a local priority project. It's the SSGID Surface Water Project. This project has been a difficult project as we bring us through the One Voice Trip, but it is something, it's a good opportunity to meet with our congressional representatives about this project and continue to look for opportunities. It's an important project for the city of Ripon because it does provide in lieu recharge of groundwater, some renewable benefits to that project, and really just extends the life of our existing wells, providing safe and reliable drinking water to our community. So it's an important project that does have some opportunities when we go back, especially meeting with our congressional representatives. The other part of tonight, so staff is recommending the council consider approving both those projects, but also if the city council would like to send representatives on the One Voice Trip to discuss that and determine if there's a representative or representatives the city council would like to send.
I think these are good projects. I know we've had them in the past, but maybe you can just have Josh send us a check without us going back to DC? Can we get that? Okay, good.
And the one thing, you know, I know many of you have been on this trip. The trip has really evolved, I think, since the ending of earmarks, probably in 2010. You know, the trip is a lot of policy discussions that happen specifically with some of the transportation discussions, and it's also a good opportunity to talk with other jurisdictions about what they're doing. So the trip has somewhat evolved, but it's still, obviously going back, trying to get money and support for these important projects.
I just want to make a recommendation, make sure that the city administrator goes back again. I think that adds a lot of value to what we're trying to do back there.
And I think Councilman DeGraff is interested in representing the city this year, too.
And I'm going back on RTD, so I'll be back there as well, representing the city, but I'll be back on RTD.
Is that motion appropriate?
Yeah.
Then I would make a motion that we approve the two projects that are listed and authorize sending the city administrator and one city councilman back as part of the One Voice Trip.
And support these projects?
Yes.
Yeah. Second?
First, I gotta get my.
I gotta quick vote. Councilmember DeGraff.
Say one council member.
One council member.
Tentatively me.
Yeah, and the city administrator.
If he can't go, I would go, so I can be backup, whatever. That was, oh, sorry, reading a little bit.
The one thing I failed to mention on my staff report, years past, RCA, RCA F has submitted the stadium project as part of this trip. This year, they did not do that, but I know, talking with the school district, they're considering another project. So that may be a project that comes back in February requesting the city council endorsement of that project, so.
Chief?
Mr. Mayor, Honorable City Council members of the general public, thank you for being here. I have two brief items. The first one will be the addition of two of our sworn officers tomorrow. We will be swearing in Angelo Aronato and Kaylee Nutt as two of our new officers here in the city council chambers at 1:00 PM. Everybody's welcome to attend. The other item I have is just a recap of our fourth quarter crime report. If I could focus, have you focus to the computer monitor or the screen overhead. This will be very brief, and as we are close to the lapse of the fourth quarter, some of these numbers may change slightly based on recertification of certain crimes and so forth when I give my end-of-the-year report typically in March. Just like to point out that our crimes reported July of 2019 through December of 2019, sorry if that hit that, our overall crime reports have went down approximately nine percent over the six-month period, and our UCR crimes have also gone down about nine percent over that six-month period. As you can see, although they've gone down from the previous year period, we traditionally travel the same trajectory with little dips and peaks over the past fifteen years. So I think it's important to have a historical perspective of what we're seeing, although we've had a dramatic decrease from 2010 on, again, it's pretty similar and it stays with on average. Wanted to include a map just real quick of our AORs as we'll get into some of the specific crimes that are occurring in each jurisdiction or location. Area one is the, sorry, this is a little bit of a malfunction. Area one is the green portion, that's north of 99 and west of North Ripon Road. Area two is north of 99 and east of North Ripon Road. The purple is area three, which is south of 99 and west of Vera and Wilma Avenue. And then the last area is four is the yellow section, which is south of 99 and east of Vera and Wilma Avenue. As you can see, we have basically two different reporting sections within our AORs. Sorry, yeah, it has a mind of its own. I think it's trying to speed me along. But for our Part One crimes, area one is represented in the blue section. We have, this is for the entire 2019, thirty-five percent of our crimes reported are occurring in area one. Area two is the orange section. We've roughly had sixteen percent of our crimes reported in that area. Area three is the gray area, and we've had thirty-three percent of our crimes reported in that area. And area four is the yellow section, again. in that area, and Area Four is the yellow section, again, uh, sixteen percent, uh, of our crimes, uh, reported. So as you can see, uh, typically, most of our crimes are occurring in Areas One and Three, uh, which total, uh, just about sixty-eight, I'm sorry, seventy-eight percent, uh, of our crime, and, uh, they are, again, north and south of ninety-nine, uh, west of, uh, Vera Avenue, North Wilma, and Stockton Avenues. Uh, traditionally, those are gonna be your higher-reported areas, because that's where your commercial, uh, industry is at, uh, and we tend to get, uh, one of our most significant crimes is, is theft, and they tend to be from those retail establishments. Uh, just to put a number on that, the Area One, the, the thirty-five percent that represents a hundred-and-twenty-nine crimes reported, Area Two represents sixty-two, Area Three, a hundred-and-twenty-two, and Area Four, the yellow, uh, sixty-two. See if it's gonna change on me. That's good. So Area One, again, is the, uh, what you consider the, the travel, yeah, there it goes, the travel center area, um, we actually had a reduction from, uh, twenty-eighteen for the fourth quarter, uh, of minus three, which is a very small percentage, but we did have a decrease. Uh, again, um, going into Area Two, uh, we actually had a decrease of six crimes reported, uh, during the fourth quarter from twenty-eighteen. Uh, that number is, again, pretty small, uh, that's, uh, the, uh, the Miljo area, uh, in Spring Creek area. Uh, we actually only had eleven, uh, uh, Part One crimes reported over there. Sorry, I didn't catch it going four on me. Area Three, uh, again, we had, uh, this was the area that we saw an increase for the fourth quarter. Uh, we actually had nine, uh, Part One crimes reported, uh, more than we did in twenty-eighteen.
Chief, can I ask you a question? When you say report, does that mean somebody calls in and reports it? Doesn't include what you find yourself out there?
Includes both of those.
Okay.
Self-initiated or reported. Um, we, we all know that there are cer, certain crimes that occur within our community that go unreported. So I like to distinguish that these are, are calls that we're actually either responding to or identifying. So, that's, that's why I say reported. There, there are some times that somebody may have a, a theft of an item from the front porch that they're not reporting. So, those are, uh, unreported, and we don't have a way to document those.
Thank you.
Uh, Area Four, uh, we actually had a, uh, decrease of five crime, Part One crimes reported for that area, and that would be our downtown, uh, downtown area. And then, just a reminder, we have a AOR, uh, number one, which is, uh, the first, uh, quarter meeting will be in, uh, February twelfth, uh, seven PM in the department's Emergency Operations Center, and everybody's welcome, and not just members that are, uh, live or have businesses in that area. And, uh, of course, the other dates are for the other AORs that we hold annually. Now, this kinda goes, uh, beyond the, uh, six-month period. These are, uh, crimes reported for the year. As you can see, uh, we actually had less than one percent increase in crimes reported, uh, for twenty-nineteen. We actually had a thirteen percent, uh, increase in Part One crimes from three-thirty-one to three-eighty-two. Uh, even though we had a thirteen percent increase, we're still within our average as you compare the, the past fifteen years, uh, on Part One crimes. Some of you may ask what Part One crimes are, and we're gonna get to that right now. So, uh, we had zero reported homicides, uh, our last reported homicide was in twenty, uh, two thousand and three, and prior to that, nineteen eighty-three. Um, but again, uh, we like to see zeros as much as possible in all these areas, but, uh, especially in this one. Uh, we had, uh, a total of, uh, six reported rapes. Um, all these rapes are not, uh, although they're reported and they're categorized as rapes, not what you traditionally consider a rape, um, a lot of them, um, involve, uh, adolescent teenagers, um, that are having unconsensual, uh, sexual relations, uh, because of their age, they're unable to give consent, and they're still classified as, uh, as a reported sexual, uh, assault.
Chief, if you were to remove those, what would the numbers look like?
The adolescent ones?
Yeah.
You probably have, uh, you probably have one.
One? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Uh, we have aggravated assaults for the year, uh, we have three, uh, and then, uh, moving quickly into the simple assaults, which is, other than our larceny cases, this is the cases that we tend to see more frequently, um, and those tend to be either domestic violence-related, or they tend to be, uh, the physical, uh, fist fights that we see, um, sporadically, you know, throughout town. Uh, real quick, just the difference between the aggravated and the simple assaults. Aggravated assault is a battery that is likely to produce great bodily injury, or does cause great bodily injury, and the aggravated assault could be as simple as a, uh, as a push, shove, poke, uh, uh, to something that would be, uh, not classified as, uh, needing, uh, further medical care. Uh, robberies, uh, we had three reported for the year. Um, two of those are at our, uh, business establishments, the other were, uh, robberies from persons. And then we have our burglary rate, uh, again, uh, it's pretty sporadic, uh, typically these are, uh, from, uh, homes, sorry, this thing's been a little quirky. Uh, these things typically, uh, include, uh, the unlawful entry into homes, uh, but also can be, uh, some of the businesses. As we start to wrap up, uh, again, larceny is our number-one reported crime in our community. It includes grand and, and petty thefts. Uh, the difference is a grand theft is anything of value over nine-hundred-and-fifty, petty theft is some, is below nine-hundred-and-fifty. Uh, typically, these are, are petty crimes, uh, and traditionally encompass most of the shoplifting that occurs within our community. And then, uh, stolen vehicles, uh, we saw a spike in March and July, and have been pretty low since then. Typically, the stolen vehicles in our community tend to be, uh, either recreational vehicles or trailers, um, and we have very few stolen vehicles. Uh, the large, uh, increase in July could be attributed to, uh, a small group of people that were, uh, using vehicles for transportation between our jurisdiction and other jurisdictions around us. Um, once they were taken into custody, uh, we had a dramatic decrease in stolen vehicles. And then the last item is just arson, again, uh, love to see the zeros, uh, we had no, uh, reports of, uh, reported arson, uh, for twenty-nineteen. We have to answer any questions? If not, that wraps up my report.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, chief. Mr. Stevens? Mr. Ziedebarth?
Uh, yeah, just really quickly, we do not have a planning commission, uh, next Monday, so, uh, we have in, one in February, so, if you're coming down, you won't see anybody here.
Mr. Peace?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just real quick, I wanted to go over the, uh, water usage numbers in compared to, uh, the year twenty-thirteen. Um, in November, we had a, uh, eleven-and-a-half percent decrease in usage compared to twenty-thirteen. December, we had a twenty-seven percent, uh, decrease compared to twenty-thirteen, and then our twelve-month running average right, right now is, is sitting at twenty-four percent. That's all.
I have a question about that, after I read the article in the bulletin this morning about Mantica. How do we do, compute our savings? Cause they're using it, they're, we're, I don't wanna get too touchy about it, but they were bragging about a thirty-one percent savings, but they're inflating their number based on population, not using it against two thousand and thirteen. I don't know if that makes sense, but they're saying that it, because we added twenty thousand people, we get to use more water, but we're using less water now than if we used the same amount for that twenty thousand in two thousand and thirteen. Is that what we do, or are you using the absolute usage now versus two thousand and thirteen?
Right, we haven't, we haven't factored into account any of the increase in population.
Okay. I feel better, because, that's, to me, that's the way it ought to be done, and not give yourself wiggle room because you got more people. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and, and on that, the state, um, i-if it does come dat-back down to where they're gonna start actually regulating, keeping you at certain levels, uh, there are, you can add those factors into it, and we would do that in order to, you know, make sure that we're, you know, within the guidelines that they're, they're setting for us.
Okay.
Uh, but we're, we're not doing that with what we're reporting to you right now.
Alright, thank you.
Ms. Quilisi?
Nothing to...
Did I get it right?
Yes, you did.
Yes!
Nothing to report.
Perfect, thank you.
I have no report.
Nothing to report? Mr. Warner? Nothing to report? Councilmember Stushia?
I just wanna say I'm glad we're being honest the way we report our water usage.
Councilmember Yuker?
Nothing to report.
Councilman Zuber?
Nothing to report.
Vice Mayor DeGraff?
Of course, I have something to say. Obviously, thank you to the members of the public who are here, again, as always, we appreciate you being here, taking the time to listen to what we have to say and, uh, giving your input. Exciting news for me, I don't know if any of you really care, but, uh, I'm the proud father of a new, uh, three-week-old, and, uh, yeah, that's what's new in my life, so I'm getting sleep.
He's cute, looks like mama.
He looks like his mother, yes, thank you.
And then I have nothing to report, so, with that, I will go ahead and close the city council meeting.